Time being 6:35, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. On the agenda, we have 6:30 Joe Murray, Dunkin' Donuts sign, 6:40 site plan review, Cled Ferreira, expansion of the site plan and business, 6:50 Laura Sullivan, deal away. Ongoing business, we just have the approval of minutes, no bills, and correspondence. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read?
To a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe?
Yeah?
Good.
Talked to you on the phone the other day, so yeah, good to meet you anyway. So, I think you probably remember, but we came a couple of months back now.
We tried to get you this time.
Yes, you did.
We did.
And it's much appreciated, based on what happened that evening, we did go ahead and order the sign.
Yeah.
We haven't turned the lights on, because, you know, we were not able to do that at the time, so what I did was just to say, you know, we'll get open and just kind of try to figure out what we're gonna do. I installed the sign, because honestly, I had paid for it, so I figured, I gave the guy the green light based on the night here and...
Services.
Yeah, and I figured, you know, it was kind of a good situation, but, and then what I did, just, you know, just to give you guys some, you've probably seen them already, but, not Dunkin' Donuts signs, but these are from Plymouth, sorry, can spread them out, but, you know, they're all, these are all CBS and Mutual Bay, but, just to, you know, we talked a little bit, these are called halo lit signs, I even brought in, you know, an article if you wanted, just a company that makes what they call halo lit signs. And, so, that's what we were trying to do, obviously, we didn't because of the situation, so, I'm back to see what I should do next, I'll tell you that, and again, I'm not a bylaw guy, I read what I thought was right on the signs, it seemed to me that it said that that would be planning board responsibility, from what I read, it says special permits, planning board, and then that gets enforced by the sign officers, so that's what I thought was the process, and I'm not sure if that's what I do, or try, or ask you, can we do anything?
I don't remember the last time, I don't think I was here with them.
I don't think you were, yeah, yeah.
Did you come in looking for a special permit for that?
No, no, we came in, we were submitting our sign package for the store, and we had looked at different options, and we said, we presented this as an option, and the planning board said, yeah, that's, we would support that, so we went, said, let's go ahead and do that. It was a hearing for the sign, then we waited the period, I think, and we can...
No, we didn't technically have a hearing for the signs, because nothing was actually, never actually applied for a special permit.
So, what needs to happen is...
Non-special permit, okay.
What needs to happen is, you apply for the special permit, we do a hearing, and we notify your butters and all of that.
Sure.
We do a notice in the paper, and then we have the hearing, and then we can make a decision based on the results of the hearing.
Oh, great, okay, sure, okay.
I think the issue is, is we interpreted as the lighting did not come from the inside of the sign.
Right.
The light actually projects back and reflects off the building, where it says internally lit, so, the interpretation of the enforcement officer was that the housing for the light was inside the sign, where we interpreted it different, we believe that the bylaw was there to stop the types of signs that are plastic on the outside and lit, from the inside shining out, and I think that was the issue, so I'd hope that we can get that cleared up, and I think the sign is acceptable.
The sign looks nice.
Yeah, and I'd like to see that cleared up, and I think there's something...
It presents, well, it's small, you can see, and the building is kind of small, and...
It's just a different way to, instead of the lights that go over on top of a hangover, this is just a different way to illuminate the back of the building to make the letters stand out versus illuminating the letters.
It's cleaner, and it's actually more concentrated, the light is, where you don't have to try to spotlight the whole side of the building to light up just the lettering. It's actually less light required, at least I hope, in that meeting, hearing, we can get this cleared up.
Great.
And I...
Yeah, that's what I want to find out, what I should do, so, but I'll go and...
Because of...
Is there a form that I need to fill out for a special permit request, or, is that you? All right, I'll talk to you later.
Because the planning board can issue a special permit, but we have to go through that procedure to do it.
Okay, great, good, absolutely. Do you, when I come back, then, is, do you want me to bring something like this, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I think it'll help, just give other people a visual, I mean, you know, remember, we went over it that first time, we all had it up on our phones at the time, trying to figure it out, and we, you know, but I think it would be good to have these to pass around to show other people that I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, to put it as part of the package.
With the full package, then, something that looks better.
I think it'll help.
Very good, yeah, I can do that.
I don't want to add fuel to the fire, but, you do have two other, two other lots in your building, now, typically speaking, if they're gonna, if you fill those spots and put businesses there, I would assume that you'd want to kind of keep the characteristic the same, so, is it possible that they, he can file also another special permit for two spots there, even though there's no physical sign?
No, because of the, the way it worked in the square footage that we allotted for that side of the building, for what we, what we considered that side, I don't think that you'd actually have the room for it, and I think we provided you space, or you provided it, for the main entry sign.
I'm talking about this...
I believe underneath those spots, if you had two more occupants, those are on the main sign.
Well, the high one, we did, over here, on this, this part of the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
We don't have, that's, yeah, so that, that would be something like that here, or however we would put the sign in, but that, that tenant would have that space and that space.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, we'd have to meet the...
The side of the apartment.
Yeah, the side of the apartment, yeah, for sure.
I'm talking about, is there any way that they can fill a structure without the actual sign there on?
So, to grant them the two more?
To grant them the spots there, because it's gonna prob...
For halo signs?
Yeah.
So you don't have to come back and reapply for the other two?
I mean, we can do, what if we do a condition on the special permit saying, saying something like, upon review of the actual sign by the planning board, but still allowing the actual halo lit sign there?
We still have to come and present the tenant's name, color, you know, all the side.
If at least it's all on one permit, right?
I could have a sign done by our vendor, you know, with a name, I mean, it's just, you know, it could say tenant one, or tenant two, or something like that.
The only thing I can see that we could do is say that the halo lighting would also be acceptable for other lighting on the building that also meets other requirements.
Which is...
So that way, it would at least save you the hearing, but you would have to present...
You'd have to present it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure.
But at least you don't have to present the factor of being halo lit.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and I think once we get that straightened out the first time, there should be no issue.
Good, good, I appreciate it. Okay, great, I'll fill this out and get that back to you there. So, appreciate your time.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you. You want any of these, or?
If you want to keep them, to bring them back, actually.
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
Yep.
Yep, hang on to whatever you want, so.
That works really hard.
It sounds good, all right. Thank you very much, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Site plan?
Yeah, you can take a look at it, review the comments that I do, you guys.
Seems like Fire Chief wants them to follow the fire codes for the fuel filling stations and stuff.
So last time, they were really just, they were really just stocking and splitting, no sales.
Yeah, I think what the difference is, it's now this. Must on the other lot, this lot too. They set the distance on...
Yeah, dredge him on the, pound it on the cul-de-sac, you ready?
Yeah.
Got to be both.
And then he's just looking to do... Fuel storage?
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's also moving the storage trailer. Water Health wants to know about any...
Bathrooms.
Bathrooms, and if that... Storage area, I, we don't know if there's an actual, like, office on the site, he hasn't been very clear with that.
Yeah, because I'm...
If there is an office, do we have any facilities? The Highway Department also had a comment in there about the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So it's something that definitely, probably needs to have a site visit, go down, take a look at the site itself, and what's going on, before we make any type of determination.
What was the, what was the...
I need the actual application, that I gave everyone.
No, from the...
Comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, they should, it should be in your folder.
There's some like, that's the board cover.
On the front, I'd better do it tomorrow.
Oh, I didn't even realize that. Is this the lot that's right behind that boat place, or whatever?
I can't even remember the last time I've been down that area, so I have no idea what's in line.
Same person that wanted to get the sign out in the front of the, so it is, all right, same, same place then, yeah.
Yeah. But, he never did the sign out front.
No, but he's busy though, lots of road signs I've seen.
Oh, really? Somebody has the color photo of the sidewalk.
I think, oh, it does, it's...
Sure.
Yeah, the color photo here. Oh, no, never mind, I like, I stay in correct.
Same as here?
No, that's, that's, that's...
Now I can put it in.
Never mind it. It's a little messy. Is that from them just driving over it, or? So obviously, we'd like to know the answers to all those questions.
We could go out and do a site visit.
You guys want to do that individually, or as a group?
That's you guys.
As a group, if you want.
If we do as a group, we can post it.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
I just need to know.
Well, I mean, it's not a big deal, but if we do as a group...
I just need to know when you're gonna go, so I can post it beforehand.
Yeah, we would have to do it before 5:30, because it's now getting dark.
Do it like on a Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah, I'll be able to swing by then, by next meeting.
You know, the day of the meeting, it can be at any point.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, that's fine.
Either that, we can swing by individually.
That's true, too.
That's what I'm thinking, it'd be easier to coordinate.
Yeah, let's do that.
We can all take some pictures.
Yeah, take some pictures.
Anything that we have questions or comments about. Do that?
Yeah.
Make a motion? To do a site, a site visit individually?
Make a motion to do a site visit to 450 Industrial Drive, do it individually? To check existing conditions before the next planning board meeting.
Okay, motions for a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
You looking for planning board? You looking for the planning board?
Yeah.
It's in here.
Oh, okay.
One in.
I'll come the other door.
Yeah.
Are you here for the next meeting, Mark? I thought your father told me you weren't here for the 15th.
November 15th.
May not be.
But you could certainly just send in your, you can just send in...
Yeah, I can send in any comments that I have, I'll check it out before then.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, I can do that.
Questions, or anything like that. Just send it to my town email.
Was he coming in today?
Cool, supposed to.
Okay.
They have to be 1080p pictures, at least 800 megapixels.
Okay.
Is it an iPhone?
Okay.
Okay, and then the thing that he was looking for was the fuel supply?
Yeah, basically, new site, new site plan approval.
Okay.
And requiring to be permitted from the Fire Department.
You guys can keep the comments, take them home and get, just so you see what you're looking at.
You want to do it?
No, I don't want to pay attention, I'll take a quick copy. Thank you.
Did you get a coffee? I have a...
Okay, thank you. Can we move on, Laura Sullivan?
Yes.
You're on the floor.
Thank you. I'm here to represent this seller of Lot 6, Dealey Way, that's the last lot in the subdivision that has not been released.
Right.
But we now, the seller is at the point where he'd like to sell the property, so I'm trying to find out what we need to do to get that road approved, and get the lot released, so that we can build a house.
Do we have the last report?
I think the last reports were kind of, a bit a lot old.
Might have been before my time in the building.
Moves back a couple of years. I think it goes back to the last time real estate was high.
Yeah, yeah.
2006.
Wow, oh my goodness. Well, it's a hot market right now, but it's starting to turn downward.
I mean, 2006, it's not even...
Did we have a report from the review engineer at that point, or?
Yeah, Gallagher Engineering out of Freedom. And at the time, they said it was going to be 36,000 plus to finish the road.
What were the items?
What was that?
Finish the road, finish course, sidewalk has to be finished, course payment, course pavement, roadway, concrete bounds, raise and adjust drainage, structures for paving, as-built plan, which is always what they have to do, and retention of 20%, but, at this point, it's so old, we would have to have a review engineer, go back out and start over.
Yeah, I don't think there's any point in discussing that number or that review
What would you like to do, would you like us to send the review engineer out?
Yes, please.
To do an evaluation?
I mean, we have the property under agreement for our house to be built.
Okay.
So there's a couple of...
Hold on.
No, no, they're saying that.
Oh, I understand that, but one at a time.
No, they're just saying that's them.
Oh, okay. So, we need to start the process, however you need us to do it.
Okay.
If you can give me the list of stuff we have to do, send the engineer out.
Well, we would be the ones to actually request the engineer to go out to do a full inspection and a cost analysis for completion.
Okay.
And once that comes back...
Is there any money in the revolving?
I'd have to look, I can look and get back to her, but I...
Because typically, what we do is, we have a revolving account, so that when we send an engineer out to do the review work, we have money to pay him when he sends the bill in.
Sure.
Because the town actually hires the engineer.
Okay.
He's basically working for us, he sends us the bill, but the owner of the subdivision pays the bill.
Oh, sure, and, and he will pay it, he knows he knows.
No, I understand, I'm just saying that's the process.
Okay.
So, Terry can check and see if there's some money in there, we may need to have some money put into the account prior to us sending the engineer out, that's all.
Okay.
And you're probably not working tomorrow?
I'd like to not work tomorrow.
Well, I mean, maybe she could check into it tomorrow, or Monday, you know, I'll be back to you.
I'll come back and check with you, if that's okay.
I'll have to find out if that review engineer, that is still even in business, because I know we had one that's not in business anymore, and we have to go, had to go with someone else.
I don't think you have to go with the same exact one, though.
Well, I mean, it makes, it makes sense that if somebody's already worked on the job, they have all their notes, you're not paying somebody else to go out there and create all that work all over again.
Assuming that they kept their notes.
Well, yeah, they would.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, yeah.
So, you know, we can, we can contact this engineering firm, see if they're still available.
Okay.
If they're not, we have other engineering firms we can get in touch with and get them...
Who was the engineer that did the work?
Gallagher.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think that, that's one that's not in...
Business, is it?
I don't think they are.
So, how long, how soon are you looking to build right away?
Think that we're just gonna catch up.
We've been in Halifax for 35 years, we're moving a quarter of a mile down the road.
Oh, okay.
We're just going from a cave to a ranch.
Why? You don't want the two stories?
You're old.
Nice and level.
I love that kid there, right? So what else do I have to do now, just wait for you?
Well, once I can figure out, number one, if that engineer is still in business, we can, they can get started fairly quickly.
Oh, good, okay.
A review would come back, it would come back to us, we can certainly send Mr. Spellman a copy.
Okay.
He's gonna have to decide who's gonna do the work, he's technically...
Yeah, I've got a few quotes that I'm looking at right now for him.
Okay.
He's out of town, he's an appraiser, he works in, he lives in Waymouth, and he works also on, on the islands, near Turkey, and Martha's Vineyard, so, he's not around a lot, which is why I'm representing this whole thing.
So, there's two ways it can go, if you wanted to get the lot released, you can put up a bond for the amount of the work that needs, the amount of money that needs to be completed there. There could be a bond put up, and then the lot could be released.
That would be great.
Or...
These people...
Do the, do the work, and then get it released, so there's...
Yeah, that's a faster process.
Basically, is, the biggest problem is the finish coat of the street.
Right.
Well, at this point, we have to see what, what's out there, because it's been so long, there may be more work that has to be corrected, fixed.
And that's what the engineer...
The name looks pretty cool there.
That's what the engineer will do, he'll go out there and evaluate what's there. There may be parts, because it's the sub top that's there, the base coat that's there, if some of that base coat is broken up, that may need to be taken out, fixed, and then the top coat put on, but, but that's what his job is, to evaluate that, check out everything else, you know, and then he'll come up with a price, we tack a little on the top of his price for buffer, and, and that's where it would be.
Also, there's a chance...
He says that the engineer is still in business, so...
Well, he sits on the planning board, too.
If they can secure the funds to post the bond, and then you don't have to wait for the completion of the work, which could speed things up.
And how much would a bond typically be?
Depends on the cost of the completion, what his, what his review comes in at.
Is it a percentage of...
It's a whole amount.
Whole amount plus typically 20% on top.
Oh, wow.
So whatever the, what, whatever he considers the cost of completion for the road, would be what we would require the bond to be submitted as.
Okay.
So typically, you can actually go out and get a bond, or you can put up cash as the bond.
Okay.
A lot of developers will put up the cash, like, if they're selling that lot off, they'll put up the cash to get the lot released, and then as the work gets done, you know, the money gets released.
Mm-hmm. Is that it? I'll come and see you again Monday, maybe?
I have your number.
Okay.
I hope that was helpful.
Kind of in the middle of doing three jobs right now, so...
Trying to move the process along.
And we'd love to have the project finished, too, you know, it's been sitting a long time.
It has been, '06 you said it was?
When, the last time the engineer went out, but it started...
I think it was '04 when the road went in.
Yeah, the whole process started before that, so it's, we've been carrying it for a little while.
We're just trying to figure out how far it's gonna take us to bring a truck from where we are to where we're going. This is our real...
Okay, hold on. Sorry, a day late and a dollar short, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, good luck.
Thanks.
All right.
We're done.
Thank you, sorry.
Long time, I haven't seen you in a long time, Mark.
It's been a long time.
But we're staying in town.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have minutes we can do?
Well, that's if the three of you were here for those minutes.
I believe we were, at least for a while.
Yeah?
Fair enough. Looks like both.
I think it's the same one, September 20th, I think you have two copies, good.
Oh, so it'll go quicker. Perhaps... We turn?
Nothing from MOPS?
Someone did pop in at the building department yesterday, thinking that they were gonna start looking to demo it and start putting the new stuff in and.
For the Frost?
I don't know. Told them to come in and give us a plan of what they were doing, make sure everything's A D A.
Part of it here.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for September twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
A second that.
Second, all of them favor?
All right.
It's today, November second?
It's November first.
We want to go to December already too? Don't blink though, it's gonna be December in any minute.
That's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
All things being addressed, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.